Most fun board I've ever been on. Well, good evening, everybody. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Yarmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. This March nine, two thousand twenty-three. My name is Steve DeYoung, and I chair this board. I want to tell you I'm reading from a script that's required by our former governor Baker. Okay, so let me just go on. My name is Steve DeYoung. I chair this Yarmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. We will now convene the March nine meeting of the Yarmouth Zoning Board of Appeals as required by General Law Chapters thirty A, Sections eighteen through twenty-five, and pursuant to an Act, Chapter twenty of the Acts of two thousand twenty-one, an act relative to extending certain COVID-nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency. The public are able to attend this meeting either in person or via the alternative public access. Members of the public may watch the meeting live on Channel eighteen or watch and/or participate in the meeting hosted in Zoom. The meeting notice provides necessary instructions to join the meeting via Zoom. Please note that audio, video, and screen sharing functions for anybody in the Zoom audience will be disabled. You may request to participate by using the raise hand function. So we have no remote members tonight, although that's what this says. Instead, we do have four members, and I'll call the roll call just to assure that we have a proper quorum. John Mantoni.
Here.
Sean Igo.
Here.
Dick Martin.
Here.
And I'm here at Steve DeYoung. And so that starts the meeting, and now we'll get to the agenda. Our agenda is four matters this evening. The first is a return petition. It's petition number four-nine-nine-zero, and whoever's involved in that, please come to the table. So this is Roger Richard and Donna LaCroix, right?
Correct.
Of Twenty-One Franklin Street, West Yarmouth, Mass. That property is in a zoning district, R twenty-five. The applicants seek a special permit pursuant to one oh-four-point-three-point-two, subparagraph two of our zoning bylaws, or in the alternative of variance pursuant to Section two oh-three-point-five, for front and side setback relief to add new exterior basement access stair and door and to extend a roof over front stairs. You appeared here on January twelfth of two thousand twenty-three, and it was continued to this evening. Normally, I would have to certify that I watched that meeting and understood fully what was involved. I frankly could not because it was up in the meeting room upstairs, and there was no videographer for that. So we can either start from your petition brand-new, or we can wait till they have another member that was participated in it present. He's away on vacation. If you want to start the petition from the very beginning and tell us what it is, we'll just relive it, that's all.
I'm happy to do that, Mr. Chairman.
All right, why don't you do that? You go right ahead and tell us about your petition.
I will start that we presented this petition to add...
You have to keep your voice up for my poor ears.
I'm sorry. I don't speak that loudly.
It's okay, shout at me then.
No, I wouldn't be comfortable doing that. I'll come closer to the mic, how's that?
There you go.
So our petition was to request that we be able to add access to the basement externally, which currently doesn't exist. There is only a small access from the first floor inside. In addition, we, since we are doing some renovations on the house, we wanted to add an overhang over the front door for rain and, you know, weather purposes for guests, for package delivery, and also for the side entrance. I was asked to address two concerns of the board, which is why it was continued from January to today. The first concern was that the certified plot plan, the engineering plan, did not show the overhang over the back door that was going to be added. The architectural plan did. The engineering plan had omitted that. So you have in front of you a revised certified plot plan submitted by our engineer, Karen Healy. The second concern that the board raised was that the basement access, so facing the house, is on the left side of the house and is close to the property line of our neighbors, Sue and Steve Clayton. And none of the neighbors were present at the January meeting. I was asked to solicit a letter from the Clintons showing their support for us adding the basement access. And I know that Steve personally delivered a letter to Dolores, so you should have that in your hands. So that's kind of the overview and the additional information. I'm not sure, Mr. Chairman, what else you'd like me to say. Neither the engineer nor the architect were available to attend tonight, but I do have with me someone who I'm sure you know, Ed Stafford, who is our builder on the renovations for this project.
Well, thank you very much. Now, members of our board may have questions concerning your petition, so let's start with Mr. Mantoni.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was present at the previous meeting, and we did ask you to come with some new plans. Nothing has changed, right? You just on the plans, right?
Nothing has changed except that the certified plot plan now shows the proposed overhang on the baryabbs side of the house.
Right. But that's what you proposed in the first meeting anyway, right?
But the plot plan was missing that, so I just wanted it to be clear. Right. So nothing else has changed, no.
Thank you. I don't have any questions, Steve. I was at that first meeting, so.
Thank you. Mr. Igo.
Good evening.
Hi.
On the baryabbs side, it shows that the proposed overhang there is thirty-point-two inches, thirty feet, two inches. So you don't need relief for that.
We need relief there, that's why we're...
As a matter of fact, I'm looking at this, I think the only relief you need is just that side setback relief.
And the front.
And the front.
That's cantilever, isn't it? A cantilever overhang? Your foundation underneath that?
It does, but my understanding from the building department is that you can't leave over into the setback. You have to get relief.
Okay.
But if we don't need relief for the front, that's fine.
I really don't have any questions. I'm very familiar with your house. I've been by it a number of times, so. Lived in the neighborhood many years, so.
Thank you, we'll stop by next time.
I will.
Probably ran down your street many times, you know, as he jogs around the neighborhood. Mr. Martin?
I don't have any questions. Pretty self-explanatory, looking for just a little tiny relief on side set line and even less on the front overhang. I think the house is a very nice home, and it's fairly minimal relief that we're looking for here, so I don't see any problems.
So, you know, I happen to be familiar with the home too, but I don't jog, I promise you. I'd last about twelve feet if I was to, I didn't jog. But, you know, I harken back to some of these homes we've seen built down towards water views, and they try to enhance them by doing second-story, either, you know, some very discreet balcony so they can go out and take a look at the vista. And we've talked about those in different ways, is my memory in the past. One, that they did need relief, and two, that they did not, but this is pretty similar to it. Personally, I think it's just a thing we can add to the decision, should we vote favorably on your petition, and make it simple so that there's no question in the building department that you have the authority to go forward. It'd be better to consider it as in need of it than to not, okay? So the rest of it is pretty self-explanatory. It's a beautiful home. You guys have done a great job of it. You've maintained it well, and these are confounding issues, these homes on corner lots. They're very, very difficult. We always ask to give relief on these. Very often, people need some sort of relief. So with that, I have no other questions, and I invite anybody in our audience who would care to speak in favor of this petition to come to the microphone, tell us who you are, and be heard, and we're seeing none. Anyone who cares to speak in opposition to this petition, please come to the microphone, let us hear what you have to say. Seeing none. We now close it to the board, to the public's input on the petition. We open it up to board discussions and deliberations. Mr. Martin, your thoughts?
Like I said, we're looking just for a foot or so on two sides, both of which barely encroach into the setbacks and are only for cantilevered overhangs in both cases. So I think it's very minor and very logical, and I have no reason not to say yes to it.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Igo.
I feel the same way. I think it's a minor request. I think it's going to look very nice. I certainly think they meet the criteria of the bylaw. If anyone who's familiar with the house, of course, Steve and I are familiar with the house, but it's very well-kept, and I think it's going to be a very nice addition, very tastefully done. I'm planning on supporting it.
Great. Mr. Mantoni?
I'd agree. I think it's a reasonable and important...
I'd agree as well, and I think that there's, if we were to grant relief, it would cause no undue hazard nuisance nor congestion, nor would it be out of character with the existing neighborhood or future neighborhood or towns. You know, to me, it's a very inimiss request occasioned only by the fact that you are on a corner lot and that it makes it very difficult to comply with anything on a reasonably-sized corner lot, particularly one that's as modest in size as yours. So who would like to make a motion, if anybody?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the special permit as requested without conditions.
I'll second.
Mr. Mantoni seconds. Does the board care to have any discussion before moving that along to a roll call vote? Hearing none, Mr. Mantoni?
Aye.
Mr. Igo?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
And I as well am an aye, so that carries four-o. A decision will be drafted, it will be on file with the town clerk's office. Twenty days must elapse before that decision is considered as final. You then take that decision and bring it to the registry of deeds to record it, and then bring back proof that you've recorded it to our office administrator sitting to my right, who does a very fine job for this board. I think we all can agree, can't we, huh?
It's a good job.
All right.
Do we have to withdraw?
Have a good night. Good to see you.
Thank you very much, Chairman.
Do we have to withdraw?
Oh, wait a minute, stop, stop, stop. You asked for relief in the alternative, I forgot. So we're going to grant it as a special permit, as we have in many cases, in most cases, and that's how Mr. Igo had fashioned it. But you did ask for a variance as well, so we have to deal with that variance, and in the usual, since you have your relief, what we usually ask you to consider is allowing it to be withdrawn without prejudice, and if you so request, we will then have a vote on that. Is that something you'd agree to?
Does that mean...
Already got your relief. You don't need it, yeah. All right, you definitely don't need it. Anybody prepared to make a motion of that?
Second.
Any need for discussion? Hearing none, all those in, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, that carries unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your patience.
No, they don't have cantilevers. It's right, right there. So it's belts on it, unless you want to consider that an ornamental feature, may project not more than eighteen inches. That one isn't projecting more than eighteen inches in the setback. You can do bay windows, greenhouse, eaves, may project not more than twenty-four, and chimneys may project no more than thirty-two inches.
Sorry to hold you up. Our next is that of Blue Sky Towers. Now, before you run up here.
Yes.
We're going to take one out of order because the last two petitions after this next one may be somewhat like the in our hearing process. So we're going to invite petition number five-zero-zero-six, that of Andrew and Susie Vera of fifty-five Lakefield Road, South Yarmouth, Massachusetts. Property which is in an R forty zoning district. Our applicant seeks to reverse the decision of the building inspector for the December twenty-twenty-two violation notice issued regarding an illegal apartment created without permits. This indicates Attorney Anthony Alva, I'm assuming Mr. Alva was here, I know. Here he is. Don't you be silly, no problem, Mr. Alva, good to see you.
Take you out of order.
I'm sorry, I should have, I should have used a bullhorn to alert you. Why don't you tell us all about your petition, sir?
Sure. We have a decision from building inspector, essentially an order that my client's pre-existing in-law, well, I guess you can characterize it in-law room that had been a rental when he bought the place, is not lawful because there was no permit on record. We're here with today with the position that, in fact, this structure has been this way since before my client bought it in two thousand and one, and it was even that way before from the people that he purchased it from. So it's always been there. Our position is that, under the statute, that it's long past the statute limitations for the time for the town to issue any cease and desist order or any violation, those of violation, or any for any additional permitting requirements. And so I'm here with my client. You have a copy of our deed in the actual packet, the quitclaim deed, showing that he took the titles of the property back over on fifty-five Lakefield back in two thousand and one. I have the real estate broker here who kindly brought, from whom my client bought the property along with the multiple listing service dating from two thousand, from the last, from two thousand, and also in two thousand and one, showing that the structure, which is apparently, it's in the garage area, and how many square feet approximately would you say it is?
Five hundred maybe.
Okay. Or less. And it had been used as a rental, but the last time that it was a rental was in two thousand and three or thereabouts. We were expecting that that tenant might be coming here, but I don't think he's going to make it here at this point in time. Since then, it has only been used by my client for his family purposes, and there's been nobody else that's been using the place. It is under eight hundred square feet, and my client on the rate card, as the rate card shows from the town, from the assessor's office, it's appeared there as an improvement, separate in-law bed and bath for the entire time that my client owned the property, and also, according to the broker who's here. Liz, can you introduce yourself here quick? There she is. She obtained from the multiple listing service, which they keep an archive of all this, showing that from the rate card back in the day when my client was purchasing the property, was a separate bed and bath, was there, and also the prior rate card from them too. So I think it's pretty straightforward from our perspective. I just don't, I don't see that there's any, this is the classic definition of a grandfather property here. It's, it was, we don't know how far back the use went, but the, my guy, it's been well over, he's had the property for twenty-two years now, and before then, for years and years, it was existing there, and it looked like, we don't know what happened with the town files, why it wouldn't be on record here of the permits that were obtained, that may have been obtained at the time, but I would also submit that I don't think that the zoning bylaw would have gone back that far because we don't really know how far back it goes. But in terms of the statute, in terms of statute limitation...
What statute?
Forty, forty-eight? Section six and seven, I believe it is. I would have brought my computer up, Mr. DeYoung, but I do have that. I can go get that, I can actually cite verse.
You don't need to.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, my reading of the statute, though, basically has, if it's been, if it's been going on for more than ten years, it's an activity that can be, continue to go forward, is allowable at law. Between six and seven, they have different permutations between the two, the interaction between those two statutes.
Can you grab your computer, Anthony? I want to listen to the language in that statute.
Works for my company at this point, not until she sold the property, but...
That's all right, don't worry about that, that's nothing, that's nothing.
No.
That, to me, is not...
No. Okay, forty-eight, section seven. So forty-eight, section seven, it's the fourth paragraph, I think it is. If real property is improved by the erection or installation, by the erection or alteration of one or more structures, and the structures or alterations have been in existence for a period of at least ten years, and no notice of an action or suit or proceeding as to an alleged violation of this chapter or ordinance or bylaw adopted under this chapter has been recorded in the registry of deeds for the county or district in which the real estate is located, or in the case of registered land, has been filed in the registry district in which the land is located within a period of ten years from the date the structures were erected, then the structures shall be deemed for zoning purposes to be legally non-conforming structures, subject to Section six and any local ordinance or bylaw relating to non-conforming structures. And then when you go back to Section six...
Are you satisfied with the reading, everybody?
What does six say?
Yeah, I'm getting that. Section six at the beginning, except, it's quite long, but except as herein provided a zoning ordinance or bylaw shall not apply to a structure or use as lawfully in existence or lawfully begun or to a building or special permit issued before the purposed publication of the notice.
That says lawfully, right?
Shall not apply to any structures used legally, lawful, that's correct.
When did it become but, using your argument, at what point, you're relying on a statute of limitations? I understand that, but when I read that, that tells me lawfully, my interpretation of that is it's lawful, you needed to have a building permit when you began that.
And a part of our position is that there was a permit issued. What happened in the file, I don't know. Plus, we don't know how far back it was originally installed and whether or not the current bylaw was prohibiting that action back when this building was constructed. So we, the fundamental question is, when the building was constructed, did the current zoning bylaw apply? Because there are changes and adjustments over the decades.
I'm not sure about that, but I, I'm pretty sure that this did not have a finished garage in it when this house was built, right?
Well...
That was, that was a garage when it was originally constructed. Would we agree to that? Can I say something?
Yeah, my question of fact, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so the garage, it's half a garage, actually. So the structure, the apartment starts, it's just enough room to fit my Harley in, so it's eight feet. So from the garage door to the wall that begins the apartment is eight feet. From the eight-foot mark to where the original garage ends, there was, there's a wall with the door cut in it when I bought it, with an addition added on to the garage, where there was a, where there was a living room there, and the kitchen part, they made, they put a kitchen in there as well. So there's a little kitchen, a little, a living area, and a bathroom. So the septic was updated in two thousand and one before I bought it, and it had a separate run out from the apartment out into the septic area, which the health department signed off the septic for a four-bedroom. The, so the, for them, whoever built it, wasn't me, whoever built it, for them to get away with pouring the slab, because it's on a slab, for them to get away with pouring a slab, framing all that structure, roofing it and everything from the garage where the garage originally ended, I don't see how they did that without a permit. Also, there is a vent pipe inside the apartment. There's a vent pipe that comes up for the original plumbing that was done with a sticker on it from the plumbing inspector that I saw when I was, when I was running some wires. We pulled a piece of panel down and run some cable wire. So there's a, there's a visible plumbing inspection as well.
Did you discuss, I'm sure you probably discussed with the building commissioner the history, whether there was ever any permits pulled relative to that?
Yeah, we did, and he also has suggested an alternate, because he, it's my, and I'm sure he'll tell me if it's otherwise, that this may, it may be able to be approved as a family-related accessory. It's not right now rented, and it hasn't been rented.
Well, that was where I was going to actually go with this.
It's under eight hundred square feet, and also it's...
That perhaps is a happy medium to solve this problem, that you could file a request for a family-related or affordable apartment, and I can't speak to the violation or whether there's been any fines or anything, but maybe that might be something that we could solve this issue.
Yeah. What I discussed with my client too about that was, he's just concerned that there might be some ramifications regarding the state or other codes, which I'm not, I don't know about that.
It's what I'm thinking, what I was told is when I file, if I wanted to rent it out as an affordable apartment, which we all know Yarmouth needs. So I moved all my kids out of my house. Right now, we are living in the apartments, the wife and I, in the main house, what we're doing in the main house, where we redid all the walls, painted all the walls, we're going to sand all the floors, we're redoing the bathroom for which I pulled the plumbing permit for, we're adding electrical two-twenty amp service for which there was an electrical permit pulled for. I had a, I had a oil tank installed, a new one of double walls installed in the house.
And are we going with all these improvements? You're going to rent that?
If, if I decide to do that down the road, I will go through the proper channels and do that. If it's not feasible, then, you know, it'll remain for family.
I think you can do that. You can, you can rent out the main house. I'm just asking, I'm just trying to, I don't care what the improvements are.
It's only me and the wife, so we could live in the apartment, rent the main house out, you know?
Up to you.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that obviously would require a new building permit and the proper inspections and make sure...
Like I just did all new doors and windows in it, and I pulled a permit for that, for the sidewall. I'm not trying to pull the wall over anybody's eyes, I bought the house like that. And the reason this all came up...
Give me the new windows, please.
Reason, the reason this all came up...
Oh, yes, when you put the windows in nineteen...
Oh, I did, I think I took the permit out in two thousand and nineteen, it's been ongoing, it's been ongoing.
That's what the field card said.
Yeah. So the reason all this came up with this apartment is because we had a little incident in my house with my stepson, and he crashed into my garage trying to get away from the police, my stepson, okay? So this is where this goes. And so Yarmouth obviously calls the building inspector to come down and assess the damage. Well, he said, he slapped a sticker on it that said limited use because he ruined the guitar. Well, we have since pulled a permit and got that fixed. We're, I was waiting for this to be over, to call for inspection, to finish it up and sidewall it, but that's all finished, new garage door, and, and I'm just trying to improve the property, that's all, that's all I'm trying to do.
If I could too, thanks Attorney Igo, is, is, you know, maybe if we could just ask that we have...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Let's not run to the end zone before we even punt, okay? I'll kick off rather, come on. There are other members of this board that might have questions and input to this. Mr. Igo doesn't control the board, he's only a one-fourth member tonight.
All right. Twenty-five.
Mr. Mantoni, do you have any questions of our petition?
I do. So when you purchased the property, there was a full apartment there?
There was.
With a kitchen and a bath?
Yes, there was.
Did you finance the property?
I did.
The bank never asked what a second kitchen was doing in there?
Ever, no, back in two thousand and one, I don't know, that's when I did it, when the big, when it was the push to get everybody to buy, when the, before the big collapse, you know, so they were, they were writing mortgages for anybody, so they did not ask.
Ask you for permits or anything?
They did not.
Okay.
They did not, so.
All right, thank you. It's all right.
Mr. Martin?
Well, it's unusual circumstance. I think the field card talks about it being, how they call it, a separate in-law, which is interesting. I did look back at the listing sheets, and there were a number of different listing sheets, I think just before you bought it, and being listed with a couple of different agents and so forth, and one called it a potential in-law, and one called it an income apartment, and, and so it was called all sorts of things, certainly confusingly, probably should not have been called an income apartment, of course, but I can understand the difficulty of the situation based on it having been there as long as it has been, and I'm not even sure whether it goes back to the point where that could have been a legal two-family when it was, when the apartment was, was made, though those are pretty old houses there on Lakefield. So that's a possibility as well, and not knowing the history, it's hard to make a full assumption of what's what, but I would agree with Sean, relevant to, an easy way to potentially fix this is to... I would agree with Sean, relevant to, an easy way to potentially fix this is to come back under the, under the in-law bylaw.
Is that all, Dick?
Yeah, that's all.
All right, so, you know, I completely disagree that this is quote grandfathered, okay, it's just not, and there's ample authority for that. What it is, is it's an illegal apartment from the moment it was bought, and it remains an illegal apartment, and there are only two ways that you can get authority for it, to apply for low income, or to apply for a family-related apartment. That allows the town to monitor annually that there's a family-related person in the apartment, or in the alternative, you have to affirm annually that you are renting it to a low income. There are no income apartments that we're hearing here, okay, so for single-family residences in a residential zone, so they just don't exist under the authority of the bylaws. So you have two options as far as I'm concerned, and if asked to vote on the efficacy of this petition this evening, I will vote no, I will vote to uphold the building commissioner's decision. I don't see it in any way wrong, I've read the violation notice cover to cover a couple of times now, and I just don't see anything wrong in the thoughts that go into it, the thought process that goes into it, and I agree, it's a violation, but I hear loud and clear these two gentlemen suggesting there's a path to righteousness here.
That's what I'm looking for.
And so if we can help you with that path to get there, that'd be great. I'm not going to tell you the nature or what you should do with this, that's your decision as the family, but you have two choices, one is to ask for family-related apartment, and that doesn't mean an apartment, a separate apartment, where people can come down one week and not be there for the next 25 weeks, you know, it's got to be in use, or alternatively, that you have a low-income apartment, which as you said, we all know we need in this town.
Right, right.
So if we can accommodate that, and low-income rents aren't really much different than market rents, so.
I don't have a problem with that.
All right, so what I would suggest if the board would consider, before we get to the public input, is to maybe just consider asking that the, while this is pending and until it gets finally resolved, there be a complete suspension of penalties, which I think the building department usually does. But before we get there, does anybody in our audience care to speak in favor of this petition to overturn the building commissioner's decision? If so, please come right up to the microphone, let us know who you are.
Good evening, how are you?
Very good, how are you?
My name's Russ Willacott, I lived on Witchwood Road since I was like four years old, in 2000, I went in the military for 24 years, came back, bought a house on Witchwood Road, I moved back, I got introduced to Andrew through my children, the house has been that way ever since I came back, and I came back in 2004, and there's never been issues there other than just recently with the stepson, never had rentals there, so as a neighbor, I have no problem with him keeping an apartment and doing what he's been doing, that's it.
Well, I think we all agree with you, but we don't agree that it's grandfathered, that's the difference, but.
That's your decision.
It's incredible when neighbors come out to help neighbors, and it's just wonderful to see your involvement, thank you.
Thank you.
So, does anybody else care to speak in favor of the petition to overturn the building commissioner's decision? Please come to the microphone. And since we see no one, does anybody care to speak in opposition to the petition of the building commissioner? And oh, look, look who's coming up, did I see Mr. Ankle coming up? All right, so the violation notice can speak for itself, I mean, it is what it is, and I don't see any reason to overturn it, quite honestly, but, you know, I wish I could, because I want to see an apartment in there very bad, as you say, we desperately need him, so this town is all in favor of you getting the relief you seek, but it can't be just at the women fancy of any homeowner, even if it exists, it's illegal today, there's no grandfathering in of this unless you want to go back before zoning even existed in this town, and we certainly don't have any demonstrable evidence of that tonight. So now we close it to the board, to the public's input, and open it up to board discussion, and Mr. Igo, I think floated a wonderful idea, and.
Well, might I suggest just procedurally tonight, we would find, in my opinion, we would uphold the decision of the building inspector, building commissioner, and we could certainly request that they stay a violation, or any fines associated with a violation, however, there needs to be some affirmative action on the part of the petitioner that he's going to remedy this violation, but in terms of what we're being asked to do tonight, I think all we can do is either uphold or overturn, and it would be my position that we uphold the decision of the building commissioner.
Could they withdraw it?
Well, they can, they could withdraw it, but they've already gotten the violation, so.
That's true, that's true.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't know.
Well, I do have an application, what I would, I would request is that.
Or we could continue the hearing.
Continue it and give us time to see if we can work something out, and that would be greatly appreciated, because we might be able to get a resolution that way, too.
Well, how long is it going to take to get approval for a low-income apartment? Yeah, you don't have a family member that's going to be living there, do you?
I'm living in there right now.
That doesn't work.
I've been in there for two years, my fam, my.
Have somebody in the family living in the other portion of the?
I do not.
Okay.
It's being renovated.
It's not a family-related apartment, because you're there.
Okay.
It's related to what, your home?
Okay, all right.
You can't own the home and be the family-related apartment or dweller as well, so, you know, again, I agree wholeheartedly that I will vote to uphold the building commissioner's determination. I've heard Mr. Igo will do that. What's your pleasure?
Well, at this time, if I, if we could, you know, withdraw without prejudice and the application and.
Anybody prepared to make a motion to allow the petition to be withdrawn without prejudice?
I mean, it's pretty much the same as if we.
Continue it.
Uphold the decision, it's still, you still have a violation, so I have no problem if that's what you want to do, I would make a motion to allow the petitioner to withdraw his petition without prejudice.
I'll second.
Mr. Mantoni, your vote?
Yeah, I'll second.
No, Mr. Mantoni, do you vote aye?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, aye.
Mr. Igo?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, it's withdrawn without prejudice, thank you very much.
I'd just suggest, well, it's really not material relevant, but I would just suggest that you get with the building commissioner, they're very reasonable at that office, and see if you can work something out with them to, and then perhaps come back to us at a later date with a petition for a family-related or affordable apartment.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Making good suggestions on how to proceed each and every time I make a mistake.
You didn't make a mistake.
We would have used the word. Call to task.
We would have used the word mistake.
Petition 5005, that of Blue Sky Towers Limited, doing business as BTSMA LLC, the property location in question this evening is 1044 Route 28, Yarmouth, Mass, that property is in a zoning District B2, HMOD1, and VC3, the applicant seeks a special permit pursuant to 103.2.2, and Section 408 to construct a 110-foot wireless telecommunications facility tower. Attorney Rick Souza is here this evening, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Ricardo Souza here on behalf of the applicant, Blue Sky Towers.
Right ahead.
Very good. And so the background of this application is that Blue Sky Towers is a infrastructure company that is in the business of building infrastructure to accommodate wireless antenna installations for FCC-licensed wireless companies, such as the two co-applicants, which are T-Mobile and AT&amp;T. And the purpose of this structure, which is a clock tower, is to accommodate up to four wireless antenna installations for, in order to fill significant gap in coverage in the vicinity of this, of this property. And with me tonight is Sohail Uzmani, who is a radio frequency engineer and consultant for C-Squared Systems, and he is responsible for representing essentially the wireless coverage needs for AT&amp;T. In addition, joining me through Zoom, if we can get to that point, is Ryan Monta de Ramos, who's a radio frequency engineer for T-Mobile, and they can both speak to essentially the gap in coverage that customers of both T-Mobile and AT&amp;T experience in the vicinity of this proposed structure. And Blue Sky Towers has been working on this application for almost two years, the application itself has been heard by the Cape Cod Commission, and a decision was issued for development of regional impact approval on or about January 10th, 2022. Since then, the application has also made it through town boards, both the Design Review Committee and the Site Plan Review Committee, in order to satisfy the requirements of this bylaw, and the applicant is seeking a special permit together with certain waivers in order to permit the construction of this structure, in order to accommodate the wireless carriers that are also going to utilize the structure to propagate their signals and fill that significant gap in coverage. And if I could, Mr. Chairman, what I'd like to do is just turn to the slide decks, and these materials are part of the application that we submitted, and I can point to the tabs if you'd like, but the first rendering is essentially a rendering of what the proposal, proposed structure is going to look like, it's 110 feet tall, and the wireless antenna installations will actually be installed behind the vertical louvered sections that are painted gray. And those materials are going to be an RF transparent material, I brought a sample of it with me if I could.
If you pass it up, I got to keep it.
You have to keep it?
Mm-hmm.
You can keep it.
Okay.
It's part of the record. Pass it along.
Unfortunately, we got to, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, Mr. Chairman, it's for the benefit of the board, it's just to show you the material that we're going to be using in order for it to permit wireless propagation through the gray sections of the structure itself. Through the design review process and the site plan review process, there were a lot of comments to try to improve the aesthetics of this structure, you may or may not know, but when we first started with the Cape Cod Commission, we had proposed originally a traditional monopole design, which is something that's actually encouraged under your bylaw. That was a monopole without this clock tower structure, and there were comments both by, clearly by the planning director, but also through the site plan review process and the design review process, there were suggestions to, strong suggestions to improve the aesthetics, and that's what we think we've done here in order to hide sort of the industrial elements of the wireless antenna installations themselves and improve the aesthetics. And through the process of the Cape Cod Commission, we've also improved, I think, the proposal throughout these last two years in the sense that the first original height was 120 feet, we've reduced that to 110. We've also improved certain elements of the application as well to try to, to try to reduce the size of it, and, and that was, I think, an iterative process through, through the application process. This, these plans are attached to your application as part of Tab 5, in the event that you'd like to look at them. But this plan shows the site plan itself, as you can see, there is the church structure here, and I'm actually going to turn to the next page if I could. Here is an overhead, as you can see, the proposed tower is located here, right off of Route 28, and the entrance to the tower compound itself will be actually off of 28. And another reason that we tried to select this location on the property was to try to take advantage of the wooded area that's here on this side of, on this side of the parcel. On page A-3 of the plans, you can see the tower compound itself, and as I was describing earlier, here you have Route 28 and the entrance, which is an existing parking lot on the subject property, you'd be coming here, and then there would be a fence compound with a fair amount of landscaping. On the other side, on these two sides, as you know, there's wooded area on the back part, but on the front and the side area, there's a fair amount of landscaping in order to, essentially to hide the actual compound itself and the fencing and the radio cabinets that are placed within the compound itself. Here is an elevation of the proposed clock tower. As you can see on the right-hand side, at the top, you would have T-Mobile's antennas that are behind the gray sections, below that would be AT&amp;T, and then we would have the actual clock itself where there wouldn't be any antennas, and then it would be able to accommodate up to two additional wireless carriers. Currently in the marketplace, Dish is another carrier that's building out a wireless network, in addition to that, you have Verizon, who may also need a spot here. As you may know, Verizon operates a, sort of a flagpole design installation across the street, kitty corner to this property, at the post office property.
Who has that across the street?
Verizon Wireless.
And you need another one right across the street?
We need one in order to accommodate AT&amp;T and T-Mobile, they're competing.
Verizon's not going to be, you said Verizon's in that one?
No, Verizon is in the one across the street, the existing structure, they, into a flagpole, exactly, they may or may not also need this installation. The nature of that flagpole design, at least for AT&amp;T and, and I can't speak for Verizon, but for AT&amp;T and T-Mobile, is that they can't utilize those flagpole installations in order to deploy 5G technology, the equipment simply doesn't fit within the flagpole, and it's one of the reasons that we need this type of structure in order to be able to accommodate the remote radio heads, the newest antennas, in order to be able to deploy all of 5G services. And Sohail Uzmani, who's going to come up, can talk a little bit about that, and the equipment needs that are necessary. And as you can see from this site plan as well, this is page A-6, we do meet the fall zone, which is a one-to-one fall zone of the structure itself to the, within the property boundaries, we also meet all side yard setbacks as well.
Can I ask you about that fall zone?
Of course.
Looking at that on A, we looking at Page A1 right here?
Sure.
What are you looking at?
A6.
Okay, I'm looking at A1 because you have it in red, so you can see it pretty. So your fall zone, it looks like, would cover about 50% of the church parking lot? This could fall into the church parking lot?
It conceivably could, however, these are designed to very high standards, including a lot of the new structural and wind load standards that have been passed in the state of Massachusetts.
But conceivably, it could fall into the church parking lot?
Theoretically, it could, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome. Here's just an elongated view of, of the elevations as well. On, let's see, one of the pieces of analysis is to make sure that we can't utilize other existing structures in order to fill this gap in coverage, it's an important, it's an important part of the responsibility of wireless carriers to make sure that they're exhausting those existing structures in order, before proposing a new structure. And so one of the requirements is, is that we identify in Tab 6 of the application. in Tab 6 of the application where those other existing structures are located. I apologize, but it doesn't, it doesn't really portray well on the screen. But in your application, these were all the other existing structures within the town of Yarmouth, and then within a one-mile boundary outside of the town. And as you can see, they're, they're really nowhere close to this proposed structure. And then Mr. Uzmani will also speak to how those structures can't allow AT&amp;T to fill this gap in coverage by utilizing those structures. And he can talk about that, not only in his RF report, which was submitted as part of the application, but also in the testimony today.
And not to interrupt you again, but just while it's on my mind.
Of course.
Do you have towers right now on White Rock Road? Not White Rock Road, excuse me.
White's Path.
White's Path.
I'd, I'd have to defer to Mr. Uzmani about that. I'd rather him speak to that, as to whether or not AT&amp;T has a structure there.
And what is the range of coverage that this is going to do? This is going to encompass?
Yeah, I, that's also an RF question. It really depends on topography, so there's no simple answer to say, oh, it's a one-and-a-half mile radius, two, two-mile radius. It's affected by topography. And so he-
Have you figured that out already?
Yeah, we have. In fact, it's part of the application. It shows the propagation that comes from this proposed site, both for AT&amp;T and for T-Mobile. It's not a, it's not a defined circle. It tends to be a blob.
So what is that?
I can, I can have Mr. Uzmani talk to, about that, next.
Those are kind of the questions, I think, that are pretty material to me.
Yeah, it's a very important question, absolutely.
I, I don't mean to jump around, but it may get us to the chase a little quicker.
Yeah, I think that's actually a good jumping off point. So if we could have Mr. Uzmani come up. And I'm going to switch out his, my thumb drive for his so that we can allow him to, to present his testimony.
You know, before we go there.
Of course, yep.
I think that some of the questions I've just heard from Mr. Igo are questions that are very pertinent and relevant. I also, I think we're going to come to, is that your machine? Or somebody's phone?
No, it is your computer, actually.
So we're going to come to a point where I'm going to say to you, is there any other alternative? And you're going to tell me, no, there isn't. And I'm going to say, well, you're the one that wants to build the tower, that's why. And so let's see if we can get our own people to determine whether or not it's, it's doable.
Yes.
Is there an alternative structure that could be proposed? Is there an alternative solution by putting it on any existing structure? And I respect that your experts are going to tell us, yes, it is. But I also respect that this is an enormous structure for the town of Yarmouth. It is, in my mind, an eyesore, have no utility. Those clocks aren't going to do a darn thing for anybody. And shame on anybody that's looking that far back to see the time as they're driving down Route 28, because they'll go into a pedestrian. And I, I'd like to see, you know, I, I'm sure, or you may not be aware, that the, the rules of this, rules and regs of this board allow us to ask for consultants.
Absolutely, 100%. I would have no objection to this board.
You're aware, you pay for the consultants.
I am very aware of that. It's a common path, these applications. In fact, the first step of this application was the DRI process at the Cape Cod Commission. They hired a consultant to review our application, accompanied by the name of Isotrop, that submitted at least two letters, maybe three, reviewing the application itself, the alternative site analysis, the radio frequency plots that were submitted by both AT&amp;T and T-Mobile, in order to do exactly what you said, Mr. Chairman, which is to reaffirm that what we're telling you is, is in fact the case and that there are no other viable alternatives.
You've produced, or rather appeared in connection with other petitions, and you always do a very fine job. And I think most times, we're very supportive of any ability to enhance the signals of-
Sure.
-the 5G system and upgrade to a 5G antenna. But, I mean, I'm just not convinced this is the only solution here. I mean, you know, once upon a time, we used to talk about putting it in, in church steeples.
Yeah.
I don't know why we can't do that here. I know that there was a solution across the street that was pretty benign, in my mind, because it was screened by a building and screened by trees. And, and its height was only about 75 feet, and we still see it.
I think it's 65.
65. And so this is going to be 135 feet?
No, 110.
110 from what grade?
From the-
Street?
From the street, correct, yep.
Aren't you sitting at elevation 13 on the top of the hill right now? On the grade that you're at?
I wouldn't consider that a hill.
I know the property pretty well. It's, it's, it's above Route 28. How, how far are you above Route 28?
Let's see, I'd have to, I'd have to refer to the plans. If it's 13 feet, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be surprised, but it's, I, I wouldn't call that a hill, per se. But it's, it's measured from the ground level of the base of the tower.
It's in the flood zone, too, right?
So above, AGL, I'm sorry?
It's in the flood zone as well?
Uh, we've been to CONSCOM, actually. This application is concurrent-
Upcoming, I believe.
Concurrent with, with, with CONSCOM, actually. They haven't made a final decision, but we do not anticipate-
I don't mean to shut you off tonight.
No, you're not shutting me off at all, these are all good questions.
And I could not vote in favor of this this evening with the limited information in front of me. So I really would want to see a town-chosen consultant to advise us if there is an alternative.
Yeah.
If this is even necessary for coverage, and I believe it probably is, because I live right down the street and I get broken coverage, so. You know, I get it, I get it, we're trying to enhance all of that problem. But we've been able to have those problems enhanced by very, very nondescript sort of things. You know, pole, pole, whatever you call them.
Three-foot cans on top of the telephone poles?
Yeah, small, small cells.
That wouldn't do it?
Or DAS.
A bunch of those?
The, the nature of this gap is that it's so large that it would take an innumerable number of that, of those. And you're trying to also build a structure that can accommodate multiple carriers at the same time.
That's the question.
I mean, you're trying to-
That's why you have to be 110 feet, because you want a fit four-carrier, right? I mean, Verizon at the bottom, are they going to have any less coverage than you would at the top?
They'll have less coverage, yes.
They would?
Yeah. It's, it's a line of sight technology. And so it, it is important to get the height, but also for, not only to be able to accommodate multiple carriers, but also to get that propagation further out. Essentially to cover a larger mass of land, therefore more people, more residents, more businesses in Yarmouth. And Mr. Uzmani will speak to that. He'll show you what the gap looks like now, and he'll show you how this fills that gap. And essentially, see those two different propagations.
Well, the only assurance of that is subject to the topography, right? You get into a valley, you're not going to have it.
Yeah, absolutely, valleys are, are affected, without a doubt. But as you can see from the radio frequency plots, this is going to be a pretty effective site. It's going to fill a significant part of that gap in coverage.
Wouldn't many pole toppers alleviate that, that problem?
By pole toppers, do you mean those small cells?
Anything else as an alternative to what we're looking at here?
So, for example, the, the pole across the street has limited propagation. That Verizon pole, because of its height, has limited propagation. It's simply not traveling far enough. But above and beyond that, the space limitations within that flagpole are such that they cannot place the remote radio heads and the antennas that are necessary to deploy 5G technology. But don't believe me, Mr. Chairman, you know, we have no objection to you hiring an outside consultant and paying, paying reasonable costs-
Because I don't want to prolong the meeting just to come to that decision. I know you've got to ride home and, you know, and that, that, and we've got, want to go home, too. But you have here at SE1, citing elevations, a pole, a tower, that at elevation 13.6 plus or minus is shown and depicted to go to about 128 feet.
What page do you want?
SE1.
SE1.
So when you tell me it's 115, I don't know how you come there. Your only depiction says something in excess of 120.
All of our measurements, as far as the 110, 110-foot pole, is above ground level. That's the way it's requested to be depicted under your bylaw.
And your ground level is at the base of your structure, is that correct?
Correct.
But you're at elevation 13. Do you know what the elevation is at Route 28?
I don't, but I can, I can find that out. No, he's, he's not a, he's a radio frequency engineer. We, we have a civil engineer who's involved in this application that would answer that question.
We could probably get that information from our building commissioner.
I'm sure you could, absolutely.
But, you know, it's just kind of carrying along with Steve's idea of alternative sites, I'm looking at this PS3.
Yep.
And these are all the sites that you guys looked at. You got about a bunch of pages here, you went around town, and this was good. And you basically rejected everything except this site.
Well, there's, there's a bunch of factors that go into consideration as to, what's a viable site? First of all, it has to be leasable. There's a lot of town-owned land, and I'm not aware of a, of a RFP by the town to, to encourage or attract a wireless telecommunications installation at any one of those particular lots. That would be the first level of analysis.
So just to stop you there.
Sure.
When I'm looking at this map right here, that were all rejected sites that weren't good, or they're in wetlands, or they're in residential-
Or don't meet the fall zone, or, yep, whatever all the reasons are, yep.
Did you approach the owners of this property and solicit them to put the site on?
Some of them we did, that are in the, that are in the direct vicinity.
PS dash 3, and specifically R6. R6, I guess I might find that more than once. And where the property is located is, appears behind Skull Island-
That was-
Golf course?
Bass River Realty owns it, maybe?
Okay, maybe they do. Is that Lou Nicconello, is he Bass River Realty?
I'm not, I'm not sure. It's, I think it's, at least my notes have it as 908 to 928, Route 28.
Yeah.
Yep.
Now, I, I see, is that, was that the location that you were proposing? When that circle is, or just that's the identified property?
It's just the identified property.
Okay, so if you went all the way out to the back of his property, which is about, I'd have to say it's 600, 700 feet off Route 28. In the back, it's woods. There's any discussion at all about putting this tower out there?
So, so there was a letter, a certified letter sent to him with no response.
That's from Treasure Lane.
Probably in Florida or something. I mean, you can go over there and find him probably in a couple of weeks, getting ready to open the place. You want me to tell him to call you?
No, I don't.
Okay, well, the reason I ask that is because I, I know this town pretty well, as the rest of us do as well. So when we look at all of these locations, it's going through our minds, we know the top arg. We know where it is, we know how far off 28 is. We know the potential that it's not going to be seen. I'm not suggesting that I could even support that, but that site back there-
Yep.
Would certainly be an area that would be less obtrusive than-
Yep.
The site that you're proposing here. It, it, it appears to me that the site you chose was the easiest place in town for you to put it up. Simple, right there on 28. You drive right in, you cut a little road in, you throw the tower up, you're done. But this isn't a bad site either. I, I don't, I just don't know the effort that you made to solicit these people to get a yay or nay. Sending someone a registered letter and getting no response? I'm, I'm not quite sure that I would consider that a-
A bona fide effort?
Yeah, yeah. I, I, I think there needs to be more than that. This is, this is a serious structure that you're proposing to put into the town here.
We take it seriously, absolutely.
And we've read all of the opinions about this from various people in the town and-
The Cape Cod Commission and-
I don't listen to the Cape Cod Commission.
Okay.
I listen to the people of the town of Yarmouth.
Okay.
And those affiliated with the town of Yarmouth.
Yep.
Cape Cod Commission has, I didn't even read what they wrote.
Okay.
And I don't plan on it. No offense to them, but that's, that's-
It was a necessary process that we had to go through.
I understand that completely. But I, I'm just wondering what type of an effort that you've made, and maybe you might want to revisit some of these locations that you discounted. Now, my question to somebody here was, do you have a tower out on White's Path? That's right out along the mid-Cape Highway there.
Why don't you get that plot up?
Because I'd like to see, if you do have that, how much coverage you have from White's Path, because that thing's about 300 feet in the air.
There you go, yeah.
I thought that when that-
Uh, yes, we do.
When that tower, or that, those antennas went up, that was supposed to be able to provide coverage.
That's, that's what we were told.
The answer is yes. It's listed in the RF report, that was submitted as part of the application. So to your point, it is 287 feet tall.
Okay.
And, actually, I should say, AT&amp;T's antennas are at 287 feet. And notwithstanding being that high, it doesn't fill this gap in coverage. It's listed as an existing site.
Do you have, can you get me the information that shows the coverage that that pole itself covers?
We can. There it is, right there, MA 1119.
MA 1119.
That green one up the top there?
Yes, yes.
That thing at 287 feet? And, and we're talking about the lime green area right there? That's the maximum coverage for that thing that's 287 feet in the air?
So it's both colors, but Sohail will explain that.
So the brown, too?
Yep.
Okay.
Can we go back to the last, please?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, it would be helpful to maybe have Sohail introduce himself, what his role is, and then he'll answer all your questions, just to get on the record.
Okay.
That one right there.
Stop there. Do I understand that the brown is included in the, in the coverage area?
For the record, Mr. Chairman, Sohail Uzmani. I'm an RF engineer employed by C squared Systems and representing AT&amp;T tonight.
What will be the coverage area for this if it goes up here? Show us that.
Yes, it's on there.
Includes green and brown, is that the coverage area?
I just want to show you what is existing, and then-
I want to see the new coverage area.
Green and orange.
This is, sorry, go ahead.
First, we have to work with the gap. Let's see where the problem is. Go ahead, Sohail.
Do you have a depiction that's going to show us the new coverage?
Yes, I do.
Do I see it?
Yes. So just want to show you where this site is, and then when I bring it up.
Okay, go ahead. You have a pointer there, I'm sorry, I'm, I can't see it.
He's clicking the-
There it is. So the blue-
The blue star is the-
Blue star is the proposed site location. And the additional coverage is in the green and orange or brown, whichever color it appears.
Boy, you don't get much coverage, do you?
What's the difference between the green and the brown?
Good question. The, it's actually supposed to be orange and just displays the way it does. Green is minus 83 dBm, which is stronger threshold and will allow for more losses and provide coverage inside buildings. And the orange, or the brown as it appears to be, is minus 93 dBm, which will allow users to use their phones inside vehicles and not so much in, deep inside the buildings. So it's a lower threshold.
And that's at 110 feet?
I'm sorry?
That's at 110 feet?
That's, that's with our tower, and they are slightly, they're the second carrier. They're a little lower than 110.
You know-
So it's actually, to your point, Mr. Igo, it's actually a significant amount of coverage. First of all, you're on a major artery, 28, necessary to have reliable coverage on a major artery, which you don't have right now. Above and beyond that, there are a significant number of streets that are being turned on, and in a significant number of homes who live on those streets. And that's our goal. Our goal is to provide reliable coverage for these residents and businesses. Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Are there AT&amp;T customers and T-Mobile customers that are living in this geographic area? It's going to be covered by this tower that do not now have the use of their phones?
They don't have reliable coverage. That's the key. They have poor, they have poor coverage.
Weather and that sort of thing?
No, the, the signal simply doesn't travel to this area in a reliable way. No, the signal simply doesn't travel to this area in a reliable fashion. As you can see, there's a white area. If you could go, the first plot we showed was that white area shows that there's not reliable coverage here. It's very inconsistent because it's coming from sites that are so far away that they cannot be relied on. And therefore, if somebody had to make an emergency call, if somebody had to just make an entertainment call, whatever they're doing, they wouldn't be able to do it on a reliable fashion. Sometimes it would work, sometimes it wouldn't.
Sounds like the early days of cell phones.
It does, unfortunately, yeah. Unfortunately, there are a lot of...
Hill at Exit 6 was the killer.
Yeah, there are a lot of communities in Massachusetts that still do not have reliable coverage. I live in one of them.
Well, can we go back to the fact that, even if we proceed with this hearing further this evening?
Yes.
Asked to take a vote on it, you will fail on the vote because I would be opposed without more information. It's only a four-member board, so you'd lose. So, again, I'm suggesting that we cut through this at this time
Yeah.
and have our own consultant provide to us the information that we're querying on.
Sure.
Which is, is it needed? Is there an alternative? Those are the two basic questions.
Right.
And, and, you know, I know the property over, over the, at the Pirate Golf Course, and it goes back pretty darn far. And, you know, 110 feet maybe is okay over there because it's not being a distraction as you drive down Route 28. But from every depiction I see of this along 28, from as far away as West Yarmouth, right up through South Yarmouth, you're going to see this.
It's too tall.
Hey, am I wrong?
It's too tall.
So, it's really the opinion of the board. I mean, I, we disagree, we think this is a responsible application. However, we also respect this board's ability and right to hire a consultant in pursuant to the 53G account. We will contribute reasonable amount of funds to pay for that consultant so that you can make a, an informed decision. Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. This happens on a very regular basis on, not every application that I work on, but a decent number of applications.
Okay.
So, I'm happy to go through that path.
Do you have sources for this that regularly, and you say it happens on a regular basis?
Yeah.
Are there sources, independent sources that you're aware of?
There are, yes.
Could you provide that information to...
To Mr. Grills, I can do that. Yep, absolutely.
And also, I'd like you to revisit these locations to see if there's an alternative. Because I don't know what Mr. Nicconello, I think he owns that land back there, although I can't say for certain. But he might be willing to entertain something like that, okay? In fact, you didn't get him, doesn't mean that he would say no.
And it wouldn't even need to look like a clock tower.
I mean, that...
Wouldn't need screening.
Yeah, so...
Personally, I think you've done a good job to try to screen it, okay? I think that obviously is going to look better than what we have, say, sitting out on White's Path. We can, you know, do something, and I don't know if you need a clock way back out there behind it, but at any rate, before we get there, I'm just saying, is there the possibility? I mean, are there woods in the town? Is somewhere up, say...
Is it wet? Is it, is there some other reason? I will talk to Blue Sky Towers and essentially the site acquisition agent that was responsible for sending out the certified letters, who knows the property's inside and out, and I'll make sure he comes the next year.
If it's a wetland, have you had conversations with our conservation commission?
About this property?
About any wetland that might be a feasible spot. Now, I don't know where...
Not, not that conversation.
I can tell you that when you get downrange here, then you're going to be able to see it again. I mean, this location I suggested was probably one of the locations that might work, okay?
Problem is, if you put it on Nicconello's property, then it becomes very visible across Swan Pond, and people are going to be looking at that high tower across the pond, they're not going to like that either.
But this one here on 28, I mean...
It's too, yeah.
I just think it's, it's right on 28, too. It's...
One question I...
Bad people drive on 28. It's going to be another distraction.
It's too, too visible, and it doesn't even look like a clock tower because the clock's in the middle. I, I mean, what's, I mean, are you going to get that much less coverage by, let's say, knocking off those two top parts of that and bringing it down to where the, where the clock was at the very top? I mean, then it's more feasible, I think.
Yeah, that's a conversation we can have, Mr. Martin, without a doubt. If, if you want to see the clock at the top, and you want to migrate all the carriers down, that's something we just have to get approval for, the wireless carriers, to make sure that they can reduce their height by 10 feet, essentially, and...
Who are less carriers? Go only with two.
We...
You and...
T-Mobile, T-Mobile and AT&amp;T.
I mean, if it's a little bit above the existing tree line there, then...
That's why I'm interested in knowing what the coverage would be if that was in half, at 60 feet, 70 feet.
Well, if it was at 60 feet, we wouldn't have to come here. There's a process whereby, it's a streamlined process, a much more streamlined process.
Would you have the coverage, though? Would you have the same coverage?
We would have very inferior coverage. We wouldn't be able to meet and fill this gap in coverage. As you can see, even with this installation, there's still going to be some gaps to the north. So, what we're trying to do is maximize the use of this structure to be able to fill as much of the gap as possible, so that we can service as many customers as possible. You know, and by building a structure that's multi-carrier, to a certain extent, we're solving the problem for all the carriers instead of just two. You know, you don't want the third and fourth carrier to come here and say, okay, we need a second clock tower, and by the way, you now can't discriminate against us because that one's up. So, we're trying to solve the problem for all three carriers. The good thing is that, when I started in this business, there were seven carriers. There's been a lot of consolidation. There's really three big ones right now, Verizon, T-Mobile, and AT&amp;T. There's been a significant number of consolidation, and you have Dish out there that's trying to build a network, but they're only in the beginning.
Well, you know, we have a marching order, too, and that's to try to make Route 28 to beautify and...
I understand that, Mr. Chairman.
Prove the vistas of Route 28.
Right.
One of the pictures that's notorious for Route 28 is looking at the telephone poles right through West Yarmouth, as they lean over 28 in places. And that seems to come in, when anybody wants to talk about the bad parts of Yarmouth, they put, they use that pictorial reference, you know?
Right.
And at the end of the day, I don't want to create another problem. If there's a solution that's better all the way around in terms of aesthetics, but also utility for you.
Yeah. We want to be receptive to these questions.
So, let's just agree we're going to get...
We do have a comparison of the, when you drop heights.
Oh, okay. Mr. Usmani can talk a little bit about the comparison, dropping heights, if you want to talk about that now, or if you want to defer until you have your consultant.
Well, it will help us identify for the consultant what we're interested in, right? So, if you've got some more information that would help, that, that's great.
Yeah, essentially, in my experience, he will review everything that we've submitted to make a determination, first, is there a gap in coverage? That's the first level of analysis. And second, will this fill the gap in coverage? And then, third, are there other alternatives that are better for the town and that will also fill that gap in coverage?
I'm walking beyond number one because I think that there is a gap in coverage, and I think you've demonstrated that pretty well.
Yeah.
Now, the question is the other two, two and three, right?
Yep.
So, do you have a depiction or something you want to show us for...
Yes, sir, I do. First of all, if I would, if I may, just show a couple of alternate locations that were...
Reviewed, yeah.
That were reviewed and asked by the peer reviewer, the RF consultant, in the Cape Cod Commission process. And this one was the church site, and it is at...
You're talking about the steeple on Route 28?
It's at 104 Route 28.
Correct.
And that's the location, and it doesn't fill probably not, not even half as much. I do have stats to, to, you know, I can quantify that as well, if you're interested. The other location was, we were asked to go on this WXTK Tower, which is quite south or southwest.
Down at Seagull Beach.
Yes, so, as you can see, you know, the gap, the coverage gap remains. It does provide coverage along here quite nicely, but, you know, that's another piece of the jigsaw puzzle.
What if you added an antenna to that one down there?
To this one?
And you put one, what does it look like if you add one down there in South CF, and then you put a smaller one up here, like in the steeple? Then what does it look like? You don't have that one, those two together?
I think I may. Because I did a lot of back and forth with the consultant, and there were several scenarios. There were alternates, there were different heights, the existing Verizon location, the canister model. So, I've been involved with this, you know, design for quite some time, and I, I do have a lot of scenarios, and I'm almost certain that I did do an exercise, I may not have it on me now.
That's fine, you can come back with that.
But I did do that exercise.
But I'd like you to, I'd like you to do that. I think it's something we'd certainly be interested in knowing, because what you're showing us right there covers basically all of West Yarmouth. And I don't think that, well, I don't think any time in the near future that tower down there on South CF is going anywhere. It's been there since I was a little boy.
Yeah, I agree. In fact, actually, if you looked at the T-Mobile plots, they actually are installed on that.
Okay.
For one reason or the other, AT&amp;T has not.
I don't think it's coming down, so...
Correct, right.
So, I guess we're going to need to continue this, aren't we?
I would agree with that, Mr. Chairman.
We can, we can proceed to a vote, or are you requesting a continuance?
I think, I think we want to accommodate the board's right to hire a consultant and review the materials that we've submitted.
And that right is contained within our rules and regulations, as you know.
Yeah, 53G, yeah.
So, I guess we'll, do we need to articulate the marching, marching order to the consultant at this point, or can we agree that we're going to formulate the questions in conjunction with the town planner?
Add, add just a couple of other things I wanted to bring out is, you know, I'm not thrilled with the fact that this is within 200 feet of houses as well, and almost within the fall zone of residential properties on Byron Lane and Long Pond Drive. And I don't think that makes it a really appropriate location, at least with something this tall. And, and also that great care be given to the comments relevant to aesthetics, because that's mainly what we're talking about here
Right.
from the community development and planning, and from the site plan review report. I think they are, they spell out a lot of concerns that need to be taken into account.
And we have improved the application, I believe, since that design review application. First of all, it wasn't this same structure. It was, it looked very different. But we will take both those comments into consideration, Mr. Martin.
Okay. So, we know at least two and three of what you identified as the issues we need to address. If, if it's going to be addressed by the consultant, is there or is there not an actual coverage gap here? That's fine, too.
Yep.
But, but two would be other alternatives, and three, is there anything that can be done even to, you know, more aesthetically pleasing?
Yeah, exactly.
Because it's monstrosity, as I look at it, on the depictions.
I mean, if we, if we get a consultant, I'm sure we can just submit our own questions to them as well.
That's what I was suggesting, that this board in conjunction with the town planner can accommodate what the questions we have are.
It's typically how, the way it works.
You know, somebody might think of something else that's important before them, but the point being that it's the consultant that's going to determine the answer, it's not, and they may be exactly what you depicted. Let's find out, okay?
Yep, absolutely, Mr. Chairman.
This is a process, you know it well.
I do, very well.
Great, so when are we going to continue this, too? What's realistic on that?
So, my sense is that...
Before, are the boards, what's realistic?
My sense is that that consultant will need some time to review all these materials. I'm thinking about a couple of months, at least.
So, we have to put it to a date certain, we can't just leave it out there, and you need to sign a continuation agreement.
I can do that, Mr. Chairman.
Do you go out at least three months? I think we should go out three months.
Oh, I think, yeah, I think there's a lot of work to be done.
That's presuming that the guy can take it and get started on it. He might be busy on other stuff.
It's true, there's the engagement process between the town and the consultant, and then us funding that account, the 53G account. So, yeah, I think three months is probably a reasonable time period to move out to. Dolores could help us with dates.
Get a date certain in the continuation agreement for three months out, please? I don't think we have the agendas booked for the furrow, yeah? We can accommodate many dates.
June 8th, June 22nd?
Who?
June 8th, June 22nd?
June 22nd, let's do that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll sign an extension letter through June 30th.
It's not, not quite, I guess just a little less than, a little more than a three months, so let's use that date.
Yep, that works for us, Mr. Chairman.
You need to sign an extension agreement.
I'll do that.
Okay?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Very good.
And very helpful to us tonight, believe me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the board, appreciate your accommodation.
We'll see you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right, our last matter tonight is that of 5008 Sandbar Management Incorporated, 452 Route 28, West Yarmouth, Mass. Which property is in a B2 and an HMOD1 zoning district? Our applicant seeks a special permit in accordance with Section 404.5.2 and 404.5.3 to provide seasonal employee housing in 50% of the rooms at the Town and Country, Country Family Resort. Attorney Andrew Singer is appearing tonight on behalf of the applicant, and please go right ahead and tell us all about it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, for the record, Andrew Singer, attorney in Dennisport, here on behalf of the applicant. With me at the table is Joe Marama, who...
Who's been before us many times.
Once or twice. Although never for this property. Kind of close, but not for this property. So, this is a request to utilize 49% of the Town and Country Hotel, which is two of the four buildings, for seasonal employee housing. Given to you a summary of reasoning, and I know you have other materials that I'll discuss in the file, I do also know, as we discussed, that this is a project, this is a type of project that you have heard before, as recently as your last meeting. And I won't belabor the point overall about how much there is a desperate need for this. I know you know it, I know you know we know it. The request here is to try to solve that need for three businesses. One is Mr. Marama's Wicked Waves Water Park and Cape Cod Inflatable Park, which is a couple properties down the street. The second is the Dunkin' Donuts that is literally next door to the motel property. And the third is the Red Jacket Resorts for a number of their employees.
That was unfavorable, you know?
I'm sorry?
You know, they're, they're asking for...
What?
That's tonight, the three, the three, the three applicants, no, the applicants, there's one applicant, the three businesses that would be used. Yes, I am, I am aware of the other properties that you've looked at and what you're talking about, but this particular one, and there is a letter in the file from Red Jacket Resorts, they are one of the businesses, I'm just saying, that would be utilizing, these are the rooms, I'm giving you copies of this breakdown of rooms, so the rooms in blue are the two buildings, that would be seasonal employee housing, and the orange are the remaining hotel rooms. If you do not have, if you need another copy, I'll happy to give you one, but we had submitted it with the filing. The property is located in the B2 and the HMOD1 districts. There are, the motel has been on the site for approximately 50 years or so. The two buildings, if you're on 28 and you look, the two buildings, you can't really see them. If you go around back to Abel's Road, you can look in from that cross-road access, and you can see the side of the buildings. So, as noted, there are 72 rooms shown in the blue, and the rental units will remain as 76 rooms. and the rental units will remain as 76 rooms. Those are rented to guests of the Water Park and the Inflatable Park. So it is, those guests are going just down the street as well from the motel. The, in accordance with 404.5.2 of the zoning bylaw, and this is something I wanted to discuss because of a discussion you had at your last meeting. That, the bylaw provides that if an applicant can meet, I think it's 10 criteria, then the building commissioner by right can grant a seasonal employee housing permit. This application complies with nine of the 10. So what do you do when you don't have all of them met? The zoning bylaw, which was adopted by town meeting, actually has legislated that answer for you. And again, I know this was a conversation that you had recently. The bylaw provides in 404.5.3, or in 404.5.2, that if not all of the requirements can be met, then the Board of Appeals is appointed in the bylaw as the permit granting authority to issue special permits. So town meeting, in adopting this bylaw, said, hey, if you can meet all 10 requirements, good. Go talk to Mr. Grills. You're all set. If you can't, come to this board, not for variance, not for a waiver, but for a special permit. And so that's what we're here before. The criteria that we can't meet, and it's obviously to you, obvious to you, is the 15% maximum number of rooms in the motel. So we're proposing 49%, not 15%. In accordance with the bylaw that was adopted by town meeting, then, that's the application. We're here before you this evening requesting the special permit.
Can I ask you one question?
You can.
I understand, again, we're pretty familiar with this process.
Exactly.
We've been through it a number of times. But where this one is different is you're not asking to house your employees. You're asking to house your employees, Dunkin' Donuts employees, and Red Jacket's employees. And they're not affiliated with your business. So are you saying that that still falls under the special permit criteria? Because you're taking employees from other locations, from other businesses?
Not only do I believe that applies, I believe you approved that two weeks ago. The Parker's River Motel proposal and the special permit you granted was to house employees of a business in town that was not, you know, at the hotel.
True, that was for the Red Jacket employees.
It was the Red Jacket as well, and there are some Red Jacket employees that'll be here.
And I think we have a definition of seasonal employee.
Yes.
At number one, a seasonal employee is considered to be an employee that is employed in Yarmouth for no more than seven months between April 1st and October 31st annually. And it doesn't require that they be housed at their employer's property.
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay. And so, and that leads right into where I was next going to be discussing, is that when you look at the special permit criteria under the bylaw, this board needs to look at, will there be a creation of undue nuisance hazard or congestion? Will there be any substantial harm to the existing or future character of the neighborhood or town? And in this case, for the reasons I'm about to discuss, we believe that not only will there not be any of those problems, but to the contrary, there'll be a significant benefit which will meet the urgent unmet housing need and will actually be virtually, if not completely, invisible from the public because of what I'll discuss where these existing buildings are located. So first, it's going through the nine of 10 criteria that the board has. So as Mr. DeYoung just mentioned, the seasonal employee housing here will be for no more than those seven months. It'll be April 1st to, seven months of the year, April 1st to October 31st. The employees will be housed in the specific motel rooms that are shown on the spreadsheet for you. And each room is provided with a refrigerator, pillows, sheets, and blankets. The, these two back buildings, I call them back buildings, they're kind of backside on the property. They're located behind the, effectively behind the CVS and the former 7-Eleven buildings. And then behind them, going back towards Saddleback Lane, and there was a letter of support from a resident on that road, there's some wider vegetation, you know, back there. So the buildings are pretty screened from everywhere else. And in addition, not only that, between, Mr. Marama is in the process of upgrading those two buildings there, installing new roofs, redoing the trim, and rehabilitating the exterior stairs and the second floor walkways. So they're back behind fences, but if you went back there, and I'm sure you did, you can see where the buildings will be aesthetically dressed up, even though they're not really visible. Very importantly, all Board of Health requirements are going to be met. You have a letter or a memorandum from Mr. Murphy in your file. The applicant here actually has a track record of doing this. The units, he was not aware of the need for tonight, and that's why we're here before you tonight. But he has during COVID worked with the Health Department on licensing employee housing such that it was provided and it was safe, adequate, and it met all requirements of the Health Department without any operational issues or code violations. We had been meeting with Mr. Grills, who I think is still, yep, he's still in the room behind me, a few months ago. And that's when we were talking about something else. And we started talking about this property, and he said, you know, you need the special permit here. You're over 15%. So everything that's before you this evening is as a result of after we met with Mr. Grills. In addition, looking at the zoning bylaw, the maximum occupancy per room is gonna meet the health codes. The occupants, as I noted, we've discussed the three businesses that they would be working at. The employees of the Water Park and Dunkin' will walk. And the employees of Red Jacket are being provided with a shuttle van. And there is a letter from both of those businesses in your file supporting the request and noting how they're going to work with their employees. We believe that these employees will not only assist the businesses that desperately need them, but they're also gonna provide additional patronage to a lot of the other businesses that are, you know, right in this neighborhood, because they'll be living here for the summer season. There's gonna be little vehicular trip generation from this, because, you know, the vast majority will have no cars. If not, none of them will have cars. And so the use will be very little from a traffic point of view. There will be an onsite live-in property manager in these portions, in this section of the property for the seasonal employees. There will also be a full-time maintenance person. There will be 24/7 security guard and cameras. And the onsite manager, again, in accordance with the bylaw, will ensure that all seasonal employees are apprised of the rules and a code of behavior prior to enduring their occupancy, and we have some rules that we've provided to you. There are four fully equipped kitchens in the two buildings, one on each floor. And there are also four laundries with washers and dryers. So everything is being provided so that the employees have a place to eat, clean their clothes, and live. The applicant is going to be providing daily kitchen cleaning, as well as daily trash pickup and package and mail delivery service. So everything is going to be focused on the employees who are on this part of the property. The applicant is part of the code of conduct, is also gonna ensure that all the employees are housed, or who are housed at the site have a principal place of residence elsewhere, and that's part of the bylaw as well. And it'll be pretty self-evident in the sense that after, at latest, October 31st, the place is being shut down for the season, so no one could be living there. The motel itself actually operates for a slightly shorter season because the Water Park has a slightly shorter season, as you know, then, you know, it doesn't go till October 31st. Not even close.
Do you keep that one open though later than October 31st? Don't you run that towards the end of the year, anyway?
Not towards the end of the year. I mean, we used to do buses once in a while, so.
The, all the record-keeping will be done. I have requested, now, the bylaw with the building commissioner provides that he can authorize the seasonal employee housing for one year, and then you come back. I'm gonna ask you for two. I don't necessarily expect you're gonna grant it, but I have to ask. It's in my summary, and I'm gonna ask. I at least just got one head shake. And to be fair, in the planning board's memo to you, they also encourage support one year so that we would come back for next season, you know, to effectively renew the special permit that we're asking you to grant. As far as the rules and regulations, conditions, code of conduct, they're on page four and five, page four of the summary that I granted you, I gave you. There are going to be, I'm just gonna summarize them. They're going to be enforced quiet hours. There's gonna be weekly room inspections. Smoking is prohibited in the rooms. No overnight guests. Bicycles and any cars have to be permitted and locked up. And most importantly, there's going to be a series of enforcement. If you have a first violation, there's a warning. A second violation, there'll be a fine. Third violation, Joe sends them off the property. So there is an enforceable mechanism to ensure that the property operates efficiently. In addition, for the Wicked Waves Water Park, Mr. Marama is automatically enrolling them in a bonus program whereby at the end of each month, if the employees who live here, if there are no issues, they'll get a bonus. So he's again trying to encourage good behavior.
All those representations you just made about the one strike, you know, this, that, third strike. If we were to vote favorably, would all of those representations be in a proposed decision that you'd be drafting?
Yes, yes. And as we submitted to you, they will be in the code of conduct that the employees will be required to sign upon moving in. So absolutely, yes.
Well, can I just, before we go to.
Please.
The one I would like to see tightened up is number eight. I don't wanna say since approximately 50% will be, you know.
Eight.
Looking at, I'm looking at special permit application.
He said there were 49% they were gonna do, but.
I'm reading since approximately 50% of the rooms.
Oh, I, when I, and that's me. I wrote approximately 50%. And then I actually, after I filed, did the math and realized it was 49%. We could certainly say 49%.
Just, it needs to be definitively stated.
Seventy, 72 rooms.
I want it approximately to become 65%.
Yeah, no, what I would suggest for a decision, if you vote favorably, is we can say 49%, we also say 72 rooms. We just, that's very, very straightforward.
And how many people to a room?
Three. Now, that is what is allowed under the health code permitting for the maximum occupancy. Now, sometimes if there are a couple, there may only be two. But that would be a maximum, just for your, you know, for the board's knowledge, so you know what would be happening. The, there is emergency vehicle access to the property, you know, coming in from both sides. This, these buildings are set off by fencing, so that they actually are screened even naturally from the remaining hotel buildings on the property. We don't believe there'll be any negative impact to drainage, water, septic flow, or any greater impacts than if they were rented out as a motel. And they're gonna be, you know, quieter since the sense of much less traffic. You do have, as I mentioned, there are, and we don't, we do believe that the property, that the proposal is in keeping and capable of the neighborhood. As I said, you have an email of support from a direct abutter to the rear. You have a, letters of support, business-wise, from the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce and the Yarmouth Chamber of Commerce, going through the details of the housing need. And there are letters, as I mentioned, from the representative of Dunkin' Donuts and the representative of the Red Jackets. You also have the planning board memo of support and the Board of Health memo. So we believe with all of that, with all of the screening, with everything we've noted, that this project will not be, cause any detriments, creation of hazards. And we would request that you approve a special permit to allow this seasonal employee housing. If you have any questions on anything we've said or provided you, we're happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's start with Mr. Igo. Any questions of our petition?
I don't have any questions. Like I said earlier, you know, this is the third or fourth time that we've actually had one of these petitions before us. I'm very impressed, I must say, that yours seems a bit more definitive with rules and regulations, and you've kind of thought this thing through, and you have security and things like that, which I'm encouraged that we may be able to use as somewhat of a blueprint going forward if there's something that we need to address with somebody in the future. I don't think we can go any more than one year on this. I think we have to renew these on a yearly basis, just to make sure everything is working. And I think that was probably the purpose and intent of the voters approving it and the purpose and intent of the planning board when they drafted this. So I don't really, again, I don't have any questions, just a comment. I plan on supporting this.
Okay. Mr. Mantani?
I have a question regarding the code of conduct, item number one.
Yes.
Enforced quiet hours, including no outside parties in noise, are from 10:00 to 7:00 a.m. So does that mean there's no outside parties after 10:00? Or does that mean, or there can be parties before 10:00?
There's usually nobody there before 10:00 because they're all working.
That's all I'm asking you.
Yeah.
Are you gonna allow parties before 10 o'clock, outside parties?
I don't feel a need to put a security company to come there before that, but we will. But they just, the kids are all be still at work.
Yeah, so.
He gets home to this place.
Saddleback, there is a neighborhood behind there. There's, I know there's some vegetation, but there is a neighborhood behind there.
What I wanna be careful of is, we don't want parties with amplified music that are gonna disturb the neighborhood. But I also don't wanna say something that's gonna be so restrictive that if three or four kids happen to be out smoking a cigarette or hanging out on a balcony, you know, at 6 o'clock at night or at 8 o'clock at night, I just wanna, how do we balance that so that it's not disruptive to the neighborhood, which is what we're trying to accommodate here? But recognize that it's also a commercial district. And, you know, you have a motel, and, you know, and just as the park just up the street, as we've been before you many, many times over the years, you know, there's a certain level of noise, for lack of a better word, sound, that gets generated in the commercial district. So we just wanna be respective of both of those.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Martin?
No, I'm very pleased with the fact that we have, you know, the summary of reasoning is very complete. There's all sorts of, in essence, subject twos there, plus the code of conduct, I think is wonderful. I think it's a great, that we're dealing with proper enforcement, that the motel is still gonna be running as a motel. There'll be people there and maintenance person there and so forth, and people watching over to make sure there's not a problem, which we didn't have at one of the other applicants. So I think you've really, you know, subject to the inclusion of these subject twos, I'd be very comfortable with this being approved.
Also, the blue rooms that you see there are our guests. And the last thing we want is to have, I'm sorry.
Or the guests.
And they're paying a high, they're paying a good ticket because it's with the park included. And the last thing we wanna do.
You don't want them being disturbed.
Correct. And if anybody did get disturbed, it would be them before anybody else.
So how are the employees of Red Jacket gonna get down there? Is there a shuttle bus that's gonna come to this location?
There was a shuttle van that they wrote about in their letter, correct.
So we won't necessarily see that same shuttle van have to stop up at 28 in South Yarmouth across from the plaza?
Probably the same one.
Yeah, I can't, I can look at their letter. I can't speak to that. I mean, it depends, I guess, how many employees are being shuttled at what parts of the day to which properties.
Right next to the Hyundai dealership.
Oh, no, no, I know.
Parkers River.
Yeah, oh, no, I know what you're talking about, but I just can't speak for them.
I'm sure, I'm sure it's the same shuttle bus.
Okay, well, what disturbs me is that it's a bus that sits on 28 and loads people, you know. So if you can get it on your property for loading, that would be very helpful.
Oh, for that. Oh, yes. I mean, there's, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that's what you meant.
I don't know that we can condition anything like that.
Yeah, there's plenty of room to walk in.
Hey, we can't have five of us speaking at once.
I'm sorry.
So, and I get to ask questions, too. And my question, as you've now answered, I have to tell you, I think that the most, one of the most cogent things that you've said is that it will, it will meet the criteria of a special permit because it will cause less congestion. In fact, I see people walking on that sidewalk all the time, coming down to your park. And they're orderly, they're appropriate, they're crossing crosswalks, they're doing a good job. You're doing a good job. And you're running a great park down there. So this was, will be, I think, an equally well-run establishment, particularly since you have commercial people up front. But that being said, you know, it's gotta be within your control, too. You know, I mean, it just, if we come back next year and we've got a rash of police complaints, you know, then we're gonna be less susceptible to granting a 49% occupancy of seasonal employees. And so any vote tonight, I would suggest the condition that not only we review it then, but you also provide us with a list of any complaints to the police about this location during the next year following grant, okay? And I gotta tell you, when it comes to the code of conduct, I don't know where we have any authority over your code of conduct. We can say, don't have outside parties at 10 o'clock at night, but we've already set those parameters for the park. You know, we've already established these sort of parameters for over at the park in terms of noise and people out back. So, you know, keep it in check. We don't want this to become the notorious one that used to be up the street, now a nice affordable home, apartment, without identifying the spot. We don't want it to become another police soreness, sore spot, you know. So does anybody in our audience care to speak in favor of this petition? Please feel free to come to the microphone. Let's hear what you have to say. Does anyone in our audience care to speak in opposition to this petition? If so, please come to the microphone. Let's hear what you have to say. So on both questions, no one's been responsive. We therefore close it to the.
Mr. Chairman, do you need to just acknowledge the letters? I referred to them, but do you need to do anything else with those for the record?
Okay, I can read them into the record.
You don't have to read them. I just didn't know, just as long as they're, as long as my saying them notes that they're in the record.
I've had them in here apparently since March 6th, so they're part of the record that was available for anybody to see.
Great, okay, thank you. Great, okay, thank you.
They're not today, but I'll be happy to read each one in.
No, no, you do not have to. That's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I mean, each, I've looked at each one, and each one is very supportive of this. I'm particularly impressed with the fact that your neighbor Dunkin' Donuts, who obviously is getting, you know, some benefit out of doing this, is also very supportive, and they've been a good establishment, this particular owner has been a good establishment for many years, so it's good to see you have not only corporate approval or corporate votes of confidence, but also the vote of confidence of the planning board. And I think that we're going to, I'm going to agree with Mr. Igo, it's got to be a one year. I don't even see us having the authority to change that, because at number 12 of the criteria under 404, 405, I'm sorry, 404-5.
Five, three, I think.
Three?
Yeah, I believe it was four or five.
Yes, five, three. 12 says the permit issued by the building commissioner shall be valid for, valid for one year only. And that's, you know, if he's going to issue it himself, but in this instance, it's not 15%, it's 49%, so you have to come before us.
Do I have to read by law? I've got the old book. Okay, it's the same thing, I just have 11 criteria.
Wait a minute.
What year is yours?
I don't know, I throw it in my truck.
I've got 2022, it's got 12 points.
Mine's 2019, but what?
I'm glad we're all on the same page.
You should ask Dolores to give you an updated copy.
She gave me one, it's somewhere in my truck, I'll find it.
The change is very, very subtle.
At least I know the color of it, what to look for now.
So again, these four recommendations for the grant of this have been in our file for, since March 6th, today is March 9th, anybody who wanted to see them could come in and read them. I don't think we need to read them into the record at all. But I do then want to close it to public input to the petition, and now open it up to board discussion deliberations. Perhaps one of the board members here can succinctly say what I think is on all of our minds.
Well, are you going for a motion?
Yeah, a motion would be fine. Does anybody want to have discussion before moving into a motion?
I think we've said what we need to.
Before the motion is made, I would just say that we are always concerned about the word precedent, and the precedent has been that we have not considered favorably anything, any grant of this sort of special permit, other than on Route 28, which is where it should be. And at some point, maybe they'll consider a town meeting increasing that 15% if it's within the HMOD, I'm sorry, it wouldn't be HMOD, but within the...
B2?
B1, B2, yeah, zoning districts, okay? Maybe that's a thought, if you want to suggest that to the planning board at some point. I'm looking actually behind.
I know, I know who you're looking at.
All right. That's all I have to say, if somebody has a motion, let's go for it.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we grant the special permit as requested.
Can you, can you add, subject to the...
Subject to the representations made by counsel in his presentation that would be reviewed by us when submitted, but he made a number of representations to us as to what was going to go on at the property relative to things like security, quiet hours, shuttle buses, and I think the shuttle buses, one of the conditions should be that the shuttle is loaded and unloaded on the property and not on Route 28. And I think you'll pull into your own property anyway, it doesn't really make sense to, we just don't want it to be another B bus or whatever we have out there.
I can do that.
For one year.
And for one year, and that's...
Well, I would ask you to consider adding that they are required to produce for us the, any incidents with the police department, the fire department, which occur over the court, at this property over the course of the next year.
Complaints or anything?
I don't want to have to have Busco research it, I'd want it provided to us.
If there are any, we'll do, we'll put that in the draft decision for you to...
The police department, yeah? Can't we just call the police department, they'll send it over?
Well, I don't, I'm not going to call them, you can call them, but your vice chair, you call them.
I don't tell Dolores, she knows it very well.
Well, I'm sure you'll provide, so in any event, we've got that provider.
And I'll second that, subject to the, subject to is that we're just giving you.
Okay. That it be limited to the 49% and/or 72 rooms?
Well, it's going to read as you proposed.
It's going to look very, yeah, it's going to be...
Similar to your...
That's what I'm anticipating, but with the specific statement of 49%.
And adding the couple others that you requested specifically tonight.
Yeah. Okay, does the board care to have any discussion on the motion so made and seconded before proceeding to a vote? Hearing none? Mr. Mantoni?
Aye.
Mr. Igo?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, sir, carries 4O, that's congratulations, we're always happy to accommodate the park at its best weekend, and you're a wonderful neighbor to the town of Yarmouth, speaking for myself, you're a boon to this town in many ways, and you run it really well. Look forward to seeing, expand, or do whatever you want.
We'll see you next month. We'll see you next month.
We will be here next month. Thank you very much for your time, we appreciate it.
We'll look forward to a draft, okay?
Yes, we'll give you one, thank you.
Move to adjourn.
Well, do we have any minutes to consider tonight?
We have any minutes today?
So there's a motion to adjourn that's been made and seconded, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Therefore carries, and we're going, meeting is concluded.